Good evening, everyone. This is Peter Casper. I like to call the Town of Hebron's Board of Selectmen's regularly scheduled meeting for April 4th to order at 7 o'clock. And with that, I would ask that you join me as I lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moves us to Section 3 on the agenda additions and changes. Andy, anything on your end, anything from the board, any additions or changes to the agenda?
Nothing from me, Mr. Chairman.
Any members of the board, anything you wish to move around or add or anything? No? Hi Claudia. Okay. Thank you. That moves us to Section 4, which is public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time it's not intended for open discussion or a board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the Town Manager's office, or you're welcome to contact me as well as the Chair, or I'm sure any other member of the Board. And persons wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box, and you will be recognized. I will defer to Donna. Do we have any folks wishing to join us for public comment?
There is nothing at this time, and there will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much. That'll move us to Section 5. Good to know special recognition. I turn that over to Mr. Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your packet, it will be, it should be in your packet, you'll have the Town of Hebron's certification of recognition award to Natalie Wood. And then Donna's going to read a letter that Frank Zickus asked to be read into the record after I read this, because he cannot be here tonight. So awarded to Natalie A. Wood with sincere appreciation for her many years and dedication service to the Town of Hebron, the Planning and Zoning Commission, 1998 through 2003, and then again, 2008 to now, 2024. She was the chairperson for 2017 to 2023. She served in the Capital Improvement Program Committee from 2011 to 2015. She was a justice of the peace from 2009 to 2024. And she's a member of the Republican Town Committee back in 2002 to 2006, and then again in 2010 to 2024. So it's dated at Hebron, Connecticut, this fourth day of April, 2024, and is signed by Peter D. Casper, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager.
Okay, and then we received correspondence from Frank Zickus asking that we read it into the record. He is working this evening. Dear Andy and Hebron Board of Selectmen, with great regret, we, the Hebron Planning and Zoning Commission, recently received Natalie Wood's notice of resignation from the PZC due to her family's pending out-of-state move. We congratulate Natalie for her outstanding service to the Town of Hebron and its residents while serving on the PZC for over 23 years, many of which she chaired. Natalie demonstrated excellence in her lengthy dedicated tenure on the Commission. Her professionalism and steady hand guided the Commission through numerous PZC endeavors and development applications. Having served with Natalie since December 1998, when we joined the Commission on the same day, we have worked together on many time-consuming efforts for the betterment of the community. These efforts include many carefully thought-through regulations, revisions, hundreds of applications, and three plan of conservation and development updates. It has been a great pleasure to serve alongside Natalie all these years with many memorable moments while serving on the PZC. The PZC and the community will miss her. We wish her, Scott, and the family the best in their future endeavors and pending move. Thank you so much, Natalie. Respectfully submitted Frank Zickus, 91 West Street in Hebron. Thank you.
Do any Board members wish to comment? Go ahead, Dan. Thank you.
I've had the distinct pleasure of knowing Natalie for many, many, many years. I've worked with them both, her and her husband, over back when we used to have the grinder booth at the Hebron Fair, which, again, I don't know how many people remember. The Democratic Party, they had a booth, we had a booth. Back during the days when a lot of local organizations had different booths at the fair. Always energetic, always willing to work with, with people from whatever diversified group. Another person that the town is going to sorely miss. You know, sadly, people move on, and I just hope that the younger people coming up put as much time and effort into supporting their community as people Natalie have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none, I'll just add mine as well. I just, again, I, I want to thank Natalie on behalf, as a resident, obviously, she epitomizes the commitment to the community. And by all the things that she's done, and I've seen her in so many different events, and obviously articulated here in terms of her commitment to the town. So so I thank her as a member of our community and obviously as a member of the Board. And hopefully, again, as Dan mentioned, she inspires others to do the same, to step up in, in a variety of capacities to serve their community. So, thank you, Natalie. So with that, that moves us actually to appointments and resignations. So the first one is a Planning and Zoning Commission resignation, just noted by Mr. Tierney. And Keith, would you be so kind as to read the motion, please?
Yep. I move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Natalie Wood from the Hebron Planning and Zoning Commission with regret, and thanks for her many years of dedicated service. The Selectmen designate Friday, April 12th, 2024, as the posting date for the vacancy notice. The 35th and final day by which nomination shall be received is Friday, May 17th, 2024.
Thank you. Motion's been read. I will move the question, as we already had discussion, and we'll move to a vote. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Keith, Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, aye. The proposed motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, Natalie. That'll move us to the Green Committee appointment. And it closes a request from Brian Barlow to move from the alternate position to a regular member of the Hebron Green Committee. Tiffany, would you read the motion, please?
Certainly. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Brian Barlow as a regular member of the Hebron Green Committee for a term to run until December 2027.
Thank you. Any discussion? I apologize. Moving to a vote, all those in favor that I forgot to say last time, please signify by saying aye. If you are opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Dan. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Keith. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, aye. The motion passes unanimously. That moves us to C, which is the Hebron Elementary School and Gilliard Hill School Roof Building Committee Appointment. Claudia, would you be so kind?
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Alicia Lemay as the Hebron Board of Education's representative to the HES and GHS Roof Building Committee effective immediately.
Thank you, Claudia. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out that Alicia contacted me earlier, and she had, unfortunately, a conflicting schedule, and so she wasn't able to make it tonight, but she wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen for consideration of her appointment and express her regret for not being able to be here tonight.
Thank you, Keith. Move to hold all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Dan. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Keith. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, aye. The proposed motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, that moves us to Mr. Tierney and the Town Manager's report.
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. Been a busy couple of weeks. So earlier this week, the Board of Finance is going to move a proposed budget to referendum, which will be April 16th. That's a Tuesday at the library. The budget that they're going to be moving forward would be, at this point, if it goes through, the way it's being proposed, is a 1.31 mil increase over the current mil rate of 33.19. So that's, that's a pretty good mil rate. Hopefully, that'll pass. I think the Board of Ed is going to support that as well. So they worked very hard, and my staff worked really hard last minute to try to get this thing ironed out. So thank you to the new Finance Director and Donna Lanza and whoever else, Diane Del Russo, for working together to get that moved forward, so we didn't have to have another meeting tonight. So thank you. I met, I was not at that meeting on Tuesday. I met with the WPCA in length. They're going to put a presentation together and hopefully come to our next Board of Selectmen's meeting, where we will invite the Board of Finance members. And they're going to do a PowerPoint, and in that PowerPoint, they're going to go over the CIP needs for future years, the EDU rates, their budget, their personnel, and they're looking for members as well. They're down a member, so right now they have an even number. But yeah, if I got them together, it was like nailing jello to a tree, but we got them. Kevin Kelly's in Florida, he remoted in. So they think they can have a presentation ready for our next meeting. I think it's April 16th, is it? Something like that. So that was, that we're moving forward. Hopefully, the Board of Finance will be happy with that progress. We're going with this rain. It's been tough to get going on the Wall Street sidewalks, but the excavation is done, the grading's done. Hopefully, they're going to start pouring concrete next week. You know, weather permitting, so. We're going to be conducting interviews for a new person in the Finance Department. We recently had a person retire, so we'll be setting that up for next week. We're also going to be hiring some part-time seasonal help for the Parks and Recs, the crew for doing the lawn maintenance for the fields in the, in the town, town areas. We will also be starting union negotiations with the Parks and Recs Department next week. Kick that off. And then, I was talking to Danny earlier. If the Board of Selectmen has the chance, please look at that plan of conservation and development and get your comments to me. I'm meeting with Michael Larry, the consultant that worked on that on April 15th. Danny had submitted some, some comments, and I appreciate his, his insight. For the most part, he seems to be supportive of it, so hopefully we can get the Board to be supportive of it. And if it's just some language changes or adds or deletions, that can get that moved forward. So we're trying to get that finalized. So thank you for that. And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman, unless there's, unless there's questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
I actually had some questions.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Where would I be able to find that document, Andy, so I can review?
It's on the town's website.
I'll look there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Andy, that moves us to old business, the American Rescue Plan, state, well, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know. I didn't see it. I apologize. Go ahead.
Nope, not a problem. Claudia, also Donna had emailed it to your, your email, your inbox on your town email. So she can redo that again, probably also. Just reforward it to you if you didn't see it the first time. It was, it was weeks ago now, it was actually maybe even a month ago. So, but it should be there.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, sorry about that, Dan. Okay, so eight on the agenda is old business, A, American Rescue Plan, State and Local Recovery Funds update. Mr. Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attached is an updated ARPA status report. The current remaining funds held in reserve are $263,585. After a view of all the approved ARPA projects, those that could probably be stuck or could be considered for funding reallocations include, and I know, I know you were in the office, said it hours at lunch. So this was done prior, going out with the packet. So we had the Dog Park, we have the Peters House Accessibility, ADA improvements to parking, with the amount of money there. The Town Manager's recommending that the following projects be formally declined if we're not going to move forward, so we can try to clean this list up. Parks and Recs Trail Development, the 60,000, 80,000, the Parks and Recs Field Upgrades, 70,000 and 94,000. Historic Society, the Old Town Hall Restrooms and Accessibility for the 125,000, Peters House Renovations Restoration, Land Acknowledgement Plaques, Gilliard Hill Water System, and Funds for Affordable Ownership. The Town Manager's recommending that the following projects be approved for ARPA funding, the Hebron Center signage for 35,000, and then the Fire Department Active Shooter Tactical Gear, which was requested. And then there's some resolutions. This is for you to talk about. By no means am I dictating to you what to do. And I think we should set a drop dead date of July 1 to review all the projects and see which ones we don't think are going to make the threshold of the deadline by the end of December.
Okay, thank you, Andy. So let's do this. Let's, let's read the resolution, and let's, let's get into a discussion. That way, the resolution is on the table, and we can have a discussion and modify it if needed. So, Dan, would you be so kind as to read the resolution, please?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the ARPA projects listed below or amended and authorize Attorney, Town Manager, to take any action necessary to acquire or implement the identified projects. That would be the Hebron Center signage for $35,000, the Hebron Fire Department Active Shooter Tactical Gear for $13,600. Be further resolved that it is understood the amounts indicated are budget estimates. The amount of the final project may be more or less than indicated, and that the Town Manager has the discretion to adjust the amount. If an individual project budget comes in more than 20% above the original budget amount, an update will be provided to the Board of Selectmen before commitment is made and project is finalized. Be it further resolved that authorization given to Andrew J. Tierney, the Town Manager, by this resolution includes signing any purchase agreements, contracts, or any other documents necessary to finalize the projects.
Thank you, Dan. Resolution's been read. I know, Dan, you had your hand up. It looked like to start some comments. Is that, I'll start with you if you want to start the dialogue.
Sure. I have no problem with the resolution, and I will back and support the resolution. I don't know when we are actually going to be starting to talk about the list of other items as presented. So do we want to do the resolution first and then get into these other items, or how do you want to do this?
Yeah, I think we'll focus on the resolution, because we've got a particular document with some specifics here. Focus on the resolution, and then I think after that, if, you know, we want to continue discussing sort of next steps in our assessment of the, of the other projects, or what we want to do next, I would suggest that we focus here in the resolution first. And then, and then move forward. If that, if everyone's okay with that. And I'm open to, good, okay. All right, Dan, you're good on your first comments, or do you, my inter, do you want to add more? Okay. So since I think we all probably have some thoughts. Keith, you want to go next? If you don't have thoughts, you don't, I'm just, I'm not forcing you to talk. I'm assuming you're going to have, you're all going to have some thoughts on it, but by all means.
No, I, I, I think I'm in the same boat as Dan. I definitely have some thoughts on, on ARPA overall. As far as the resolution goes and, and these two items, I mean, at this point, we, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned that we're going to end up not spending all the money in the allotted time. So I'm not worried about, you know, $48,000 being spent on stuff that's ready to go. I, I would like more things to be ready to go, so that we could start, you know, spending some of this money. I, you know, I, I just, I'm very concerned about when we say things are stuck, when we say things should be declined, because I know, at least from, from some of the members, you know, the residents in town, that some of those items are important to them. And I think that if, if we, you know, got the word out more that residents would have an issue with why are Parks and Rec Field Upgrades not being vigorously pursued? You know, why, I mean, you know, we, we sit here and we, and we turn around every couple of weeks, and we keep saying about that, that survey, the survey, the survey, every single time. I feel like we're talking about the survey, and 67% of people say they like open space in Hebron. And we're talking about nixing P and R trail upgrade, trail developments and field upgrades. I, I just, I think when this is all said and done, I think that the residents, when they see, see the number of projects that fail to be funded and how much ARPA money is left at the end, they're going to say that we were not good stewards of their funds. And that bothers me, because if there's one thing that I take personally, it's being a good steward of public funds. So I, I don't have a problem with the motion on the table, but we, we need to have a deeper talk about this.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Yeah, well said, Keith. I completely agree. I think, you know, I've personally heard from a lot of constituents on the Dog Park, right? And so I guess when we get to that discussion, my question is, how do we determine what's stuck? Why are projects stuck? And how do we get them moving forward, right? Like why, what are the reason for those two projects to be pulled out of being stalled and others as not? So that's certainly worth having a conversation in and of itself. So I have no problem with the resolution on the table, but I would echo Keith's excellent comments, and I agree that this is important. This was money that came once-in-a-lifetime money, and I, I also have a similar concern that we need to address all, as many constituents in town as possible, and not just fund certain projects over others, to Keith's point. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia?
I, I would also echo the same sentiments as Keith and Tiffany. We have, we have a duty, honestly, so we need to come through for, for the residents.
Thank you. And so, you know, my thoughts are, are in alignment. I, I think the projects that were declining are, in essence, the projects that we haven't moved forward with to fully assess and approve. And so I also believe we have, it feels like too many projects that need some more resolution and, and the details articulated from a contract perspective, or committed to from a contract perspective. These obviously could come back on, but I think the ability to focus on, on the projects that we have done more work on as a collective group and get some resolution there, and then, as Tiffany said, if we've got to understand what's stuck and what's not stuck and how to unstick it, we should be focusing on that. So I, as well, think, you know, I have no issue with the, with the resolution, and I want to make sure that we're all comfortable with the timeline that we're going to agree to, to accelerate this initiative, because like all of you, I want to spend on behalf of our community, every dollar that we have been, as Tiffany said, been so fortunate to have been gifted. It would be, as all of us have said, it would be a very poor reflection on this board and the board before if we couldn't figure out a way to to allocate this money, spend it, get the commitments to it, and bring these, this benefit to our community. So I, I agree. So I think, based on the comments on the resolution, I, at this point, let's vote on the resolution, and then, if I may, after that, I think we should at least talk about the scheduling of, of, we can discuss some of these items in more detail, or at least finish this discussion, but I think we're done on the resolution. So based on that, all those in favor of the resolution that's been read by Dan, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Keith. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Dan. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, aye. The resolution passes unanimously as presented. Thank you very much. So before we move off this topic in general, the American Rescue Plan update. Andy, is there anything else you wish to share regarding any of the items that weren't addressed in the resolution, or anything you wanted to add from a context perspective as we sort of finish up at least tonight's discussion on this?
Yeah, we'll leave it, we'll leave it on the agenda, and then I'm going to have more updates. I got, I just got an update today from Parks and Rec. So they're meeting with Planning and Zoning. They brought up the lights. The lights were discussed, and it seemed as if they were going to move forward. The town plan is working on an amendment to the regulations. They surveyed for the pickleball courts. They're doing survey for the playscape at the Gilliard Hill School, so things are moving forward. I should have a better progress report on the other projects that, that we were, we're working on. And then I guess you were in the office today. You had an update for the Dog Park. That they have a location, so that was, that was news to me. So we'll, we'll put all that stuff together for the next meeting.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable that the next meeting will get into the, more of these updates and be able to drill down more specifically on, on the status? Are you comfortable moving on from the topic? I don't want to rush. If you're not, we can stay here, but.
Mr. Chair, I just have one quick question. I'm looking at the three projects that are listed for removal that were all TBD. Is there, to clean up the list, would there be, you know, an, an option to maybe remove those three if they are TBD? Are they still in development by a deadline? I guess I, I just, you know, if we wanted to try to clean up the list, and we don't even have dollar amounts for those three projects, I mean, maybe those can just come off completely for now, and then we can focus on the ones that do have estimates. I'm just throwing it out there. If we wanted to clean up the list a little bit, I can go.
That would help.
Okay, Keith, do you want to add to Tiffany's comments, or do you have something else? Because I think it's a good point.
Yeah, mine was, you know, on, on a slightly different topic, but kind of along the same thing. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with discussing this at the next regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting, but I think, I think the thing is, is I, I don't necessarily know that we're going to get the information that we need at a regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting. I mean, we're still hovering right around that 15 mark of people that always show up to our, our meeting. This is something that I really strongly, I mean, I hate to be beating a dead horse on this, but for Parks and Rec, for two major items to be on a, a potential cut list, and for at least my experience with the residents' preferences, I, I think that they are, you know, very uninformed that this is the situation we're in, because if they were informed, they would have something to say about it. So I think, you know, if we, if we are going to have this at the next regularly scheduled meeting, there needs to be some advertisement or push above and beyond the normal, you know, posting on the average websites to make sure that the public knows a date and time, that their voice will be heard, that potentially these items are going to be cut if nobody raises their hand for it. And/or maybe something better is, I know 7 o'clock is a, is a thing for us, and that's, you know, that's good. It's regular, it's consistent. But, you know, I think we also have to take into account the fact that some residents have families, they have obligations. I don't know if a different time or a different scheduling might increase turnout. I, you know, I'm not always sure about that, because sometimes we have other public forums and nobody shows up anyways, but I, I just think, I think we need to put a little bit more effort into this than just, we're going to cover it next meeting.
Okay, so why not, well, two things. Why don't we first, well, let me finish the thought on that, and then I'm going to go back to Tiffany for a second. So Andy, I think, you know, it's, it sounds like, and we talked about this before, maybe we should schedule a workshop specifically dedicated this, schedule it at maybe the, I don't know what's a good time, end of the month, beginning of May, so everyone, so we can continue to talk about it, prep for it. You can talk to all the department heads, get them, give them some time to say, listen, it's time to, it's time to rally and provide you whatever you're looking for, to at least allow us a dialogue. So would the Board be comfortable with a workshop as sort of a, in addition to it staying on the agenda, that we can maybe conduct in the next month or so?
I, I wouldn't even go a step further and have something on a recurring basis. You know, the one-offs, in my opinion, are not enough.
Right, in my opinion, are not enough.
Okay, Andy, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I just, I've been sitting back. Everything you guys are saying is is totally accurate. The rea- the reason we're suggesting some of those cuts, especially to the Parks and Rec is that's what talking with, um. The chairman and the director, we funded some of that stuff in other areas. Um, Hammer's out there already approving one of the fields. We're, we're doing St. Peters, totally something different with St. Peters. We're building new pickleball fields here. And we've got some money in there for the trails. Uh, but I was going to let the director and then the chairman of that commission speak to that. I mean, you could bring those to, they could also be at the next meeting, clear up those, uh. Those items. I think Keith's spot on about having the people that are, uh, heads of those commissions and in charge of those projects. They should be here to answer the questions as well. They represent the people that actually want those or put those in.
So what Claudia is saying, I wonder then, Andy, as we think through this and here are concerns. Maybe we can at each of the, the, when it stays on the agenda, each of the meetings, we can have somebody that represents those topics. Uh, and we can plus question them. We can, we always want, you know, want to do it, you know, have it.
Yeah, we'll do a few at a time.
Few at a time. So every meeting, to Claudia's point, we have someone speaking to these specific projects. So the public that is in attendance or watches later can know that that's on the agenda. Uh, and then we supplement that with a more comprehensive dedicated workshop. And then if we need to do another workshop, you know, but. I think it would show, uh, so we, some commitment, uh, to really moving everything forward at at a faster pace. And so. Uh, I would suggest that we consider maybe, Andy, look at the calendar for a workshop. The next month or so, see what it looks like, because obviously there's a lot of work that you have to do and your staff needs to be prepared. Uh, and then we'll, we'll set that up. And then if you could get the Parks and Rec folks at the next meeting. Or some representative, Craig, whomever you wish, to at least address Keith's concerns, I would move some items. Um, and anything else, uh, because I'm interested in the, in the light update and all the stuff you're talking about. So there's a lot that they can be talking about. And then we can talk a little bit about the dog park as well. Uh, is everyone on the board comfortable with that process? We'll add them, um, to the next, and then we'll schedule a workshop. In the next month or so, um, based on, get some dates out. Uh, Dan?
Uh, yes, now this is monies that are already been approved, correct? And the reason I'm asking is because like one of the areas with the Peters House renovation, restoration. They've already met with, uh, I want to say it's a Mrs. Dunn, who is an archaeological expert. Uh, they're ready to go on these projects as soon as as, uh, people come up with the drawings. So I hate to see. You know, this money cut and and my other issue is that. If the Peters House isn't done with a lot of these projects or a lot of these funds. I don't know if they'll ever see the grants or whatever to get this project done. Um, so I I would really like to see this going forward. So if this money is available now. Um, I think pressure needs to get put on this, this specialist that. They brought in so that everything is done properly to come up with that final design.
Yeah, the Ds and or, uh, oh, sorry, I apologize.
Now, I was gonna say, it's not like nobody's worked on any of this stuff. You know, they're waiting for, you know, experts to get back to them on best practices.
So to answer your question about those recommended for declination or consideration for us to decline. Those who were approved by the attorney as eligible, but the Board of Selectmen never approved them. So they're not, they're not approved projects by the Board of Select. Um, they were approved as eligible, but for whatever reason, they never, uh, the board never acted on that in the course of that. Uh, discussion. So they're sitting out there sort of in limbo. So I think Andy's point was. You know, i- if they're in limbo, I can, maybe we shouldn't add more to the pile, um, and and to his point, some of these have been addressed in other ways, but. Yeah, I mean, you can, we can talk about that, Dan, uh, in the next session where. Your point is that if work's been done and maybe we weren't aware of that and maybe one or two of these items need to come back on or to Keith's point, maybe some partial funding needs to come back on to do more work here, but. I think we can incorporate that dialogue into our, our coming sessions. Um, but these were sitting out there, Dan, and, uh. You know, not approved by the board, uh, for whatever reason. And maybe, remember at one point we got to the funding that it was, you know, we were sort of, we, we didn't have enough in reserves and we were sort of. Yeah, so that was all, that's all, that was also part of it, as I remember correctly, if I remember correctly. Donna, did you want to add something?
I I did. On the Peters House item, it does appear in two places and there is money that has been approved by the board. For the, um, accessibility and ADA improvements. We had approved a hundred thousand and then there was a second request for another fifty thousand. So Dan is correct. There's money that has already been approved through ARPA.
For Peters, okay, then this is the second.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Yes, Andy?
Yeah, just, uh. To be the bad guy on here tonight is, and I can thank Tiffany for. Being due diligence and making sure we push these projects forward and she's been a good champion of making sure I do that. Thank God Danny's on here because I've been working with the Historic Properties Commission for months and months and months regarding that ADA. And that parking area and they're not getting back to me. So maybe this is the wake up call they need to have because. As you guys are putting pressure on me, I'm putting pressure on them. They can't. Agree themselves on how they want to proceed. And I've had the town planners sit with them and try to help them. And once again, it's just, uh, it's cricket. So. As the deadlines approaching, this is the kind of tack we're going to have to do to start pushing some, some of these projects to get either. Get moving or I'm going to get a, an F on my report card. So I'm trying to. Trying to be diligent and and and, you know, I, you see me on the screen. I don't, I don't see everybody. I don't know if you can see Donna or not, but. Don, Donna is a resource at the office. We're, we're constantly working on these projects and trying to get these things moving. Um, Matt's working hard to get these things through planning and zoning. Craig's working hard on his stuff. Um, but there's some other ones that are out there that are just, just seem to be sitting there. So this is kind of trying to push these along or or, uh. Like, hey, guys, we're getting serious. We don't want to lose the money like Keith said.
Okay, so good. I think that's good dialogue and and we'll continue that and appreciate all of your efforts and. Moving this forward because as we're seeing, this is a huge undertaking. So thank you for all that. Tiffany, uh, if I may, and I apologize for the delay, get back to you and your suggestion. If you would like to present a motion, um, to eliminate those items. Uh, that are the TBD, I think that was your suggestion. Um, I, you know, obviously want to encourage you to make any motion you feel you'd like to make, but I thought that was a good suggestion. Uh, did you want to move forward with a motion to remove those?
Um, you know, happy to unless there's, unless there's significant objection to keeping them on, but my thought again is if we. If we don't even have an estimate and we have estimates for the field upgrades and the trail development, which I would argue are are probably the higher priority items in that list. Then I think in the interest of cleaning up the list, if we don't even have dollar amounts for those three items. I think they should be removed. So unless there's massive opposition, I'm happy to make that motion to just get them off the list and then we don't even have to worry about them moving forward.
Keith?
Yeah, I I just think, um, you know, to Andy's point about about lighting the fire under people. If there are, um, people working on the TBDs and they're not getting back for whatever reason with estimates or or anything of the like. Um, I agree that, you know, if if we need to issue an ultimatum to to have some movement, then that's fine. So I would say we do that tonight and we say, anything that doesn't have a dollar amount attached to it. Is is going to be gone next, next regular meeting.
Andy, did you want to add anything? I see your mic open. Did you want to add anything, Andy? Are you good?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, so, now, remember, these, these were never approved by the board either, as you, as you, as we talked about. So. Tiffany, are you okay waiting and giving some more time?
Totally fine. I mean, I offered it if we wanted to clean up the list, but I think, um. To Keith's point, I think, you know, if if some of these projects are are really wanted and some people have been. Falling behind, then I think one last ultimatum, ultimatum is the polite thing to do and then we can move on from there.
And and, you know, another point, it it doesn't necessarily have to be relegated to just the TBDs. I mean. You know, the other ones, the, the point has been made that we haven't technically allocated it right now. They're very large estimates. You know, you have that sixty to eighty, seventy to ninety-four. Um, I I mean, I understand where Andy is coming from and I appreciate, you know, his, his perspective on the problems. Um, I I would, I would think that those would fall into the same thing. If people don't have legitimate estimates that they can put a dollar amount on and say, this is what it's going to cost. Yeah, we're going to tack twenty percent onto that just in case, but. If it's still wishy washy by next meeting, then, you know. Too bad, so sad. Um, but. You know, I I really think that residents are going to be upset if they think that, you know. Uh, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that could have gone to Parks and Rec for improvements in town. Gets nixed because somebody didn't go and get an estimate. Um, you know, at that point. Yes, it's still somewhat on us as a Board of Selectmen, but it's also on them. Like, they need to realize that. When, when the residents are angry, you know, why do my, why are my fields not? In tip top shape? Why is this happening? Why is that happening? When you could have spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on it of, you know, federal money. Like. I mean, thi- this is, this is like a tax return from, from Uncle Sam. Like this is money coming back to to the town. We need to, we need to use every penny. So, um, yeah, I I would put all of those on the block for next meeting to kind of get people moving on it, but. I would really hate to be the person to have to explain to residents why a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not being spent on Parks and Rec.
Okay, any more discussions? So thank you, Tiffany, for your, your getting this dialogue going with those items and obviously the next meeting, we have. Quite a bit to talk about. And thank you, Andy, for moving this along and Donna for your work in preparing it. So based on. That I suggest, uh, unless anyone wishes to discuss it further, we move on to. Be on old businesses. Everyone comfortable moving forward? Yes, okay, great. So eight, uh, the Department of Public Works Action Committee update. Um, that is for me to provide an update. And, um, so two things, um, the communication update. Uh, thank you, Donna, for your work and assistance, obviously Andy as well, because we needed to work with, uh, Andy and Donna. Uh, on this item, but the committee has moved forward with. Uh, an FAQ section, which Donna has posted on our town website. So thank you both Andy and Donna for your. Help in embedding through those initial questions and documentation that has been presented. So it's the start of the process. So that's out there. Uh, and, uh, we have also gone out, uh, a member of the committee has gone out and posted on the. Uh, Heeman Town, uh, a Facebook page to, uh, start the social media. Uh, campaign in terms of making sure we're doing whatever we can do to start bringing, putting the word out that there's some additional information. And FAQs that are reflective of constituent, uh, inquiries associated with this initiative. Um, so that's the next, that's out there and that'll continue to be worked on. So, um, that is, uh, currently available and, uh, and and I'm going. Uh, and we were targeting that for the end of the month and based on, and the holiday ended up getting posted Monday, the first, but, um, we're, uh. Making some good progress there. The next meeting, it looks like scheduled, it's going to be scheduled for the week of the fifteenth, um, of April. Further discussions with the engineer, uh, associated with site design and assessment. So I know Colchester, some more of there is being done. Andy, do you want to add anything to the? Sort of next steps of this process?
Yes, so hopefully this is good news. I got a verbal confirmation back from EverSource that they would be willing to sell us the property. Adjacent to five fifty Old Colchester Road, uh, we're awaiting a appraisal, which we've hired somebody to go in there and do. They've done their appraisal. Um, so we'll get them our appraisal. Uh, we did have some contact with DEEP, which. Uh, there's an MOU that that land would be used for, um, open space. So we, uh. We're seeing if we can get that modified like we did the last time. We were interested in that. So, once we get the appraisals done, we'll know what the price is. And the only holdup would be, and it shouldn't hold us up, we can design it using that, uh, extra space, knowing it would be. You know, possible to purchase that. Um. But it's a long process to go through ARPA because it's considered, um. An asset for, uh, EverSource and because they're a regulated agency, there's, it's an eight month to twelve month. Review process to make sure that that that's legit. So that's, that's not a concern. I've had conversations with Camp Connecticut that has just a handshake for an easement over that. And I told them if the town were to purchase that, we would probably honor. Uh, a more formal easement to their property and they said they would be willing to, um, possibly relinquish their other parcel. On the other side of the five fifty Old Colchester Road where the, um. Uh, the setbacks, that would help with setbacks and and right now the present, um, employee parking lot. So all good conversations, um, when you're dealing with regulatory agencies, it takes a little bit of time. It took a year to get the answer, believe it or not. It started back in, uh. Last April with this question and I just finally got a verbal, uh, last week and, uh, hopefully we'll have a. Uh, the assessment or the appraisal of the property by next week, hopefully.
Well, very good news. And I know you, you've been working very hard, even though it sounds like it's such a long process, but it would be longer, uh, if not for your efforts. So thank you. Uh, for pushing that, Andy. I know you've worked hard to, uh, to stay in front of EverSource on this and hopefully give the, the town an option. So thank you for that, for your efforts there and and for a really good update. So thank you. So unless, is there any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, HC is Planet Conservation. We've discussed that already and you can see that's noted as no need for further discussion, Andy. Just said at the beginning, so please get your comments to Andy. Uh, and that moves us, uh, Mr. Tierney to the, uh. Uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget discussion.
Yeah, so in the packet, hopefully everybody got it. It's attached as a copy of the Budget Transmittal and Summary of the Board of Selectmen's Recommended Budget Submittal. To the Board of Finance on March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. It is appropriate at this time for the selected to discuss and decide on budget communication tools. To be used for the May seventh, two thousand and twenty four budget referendum, including. The explanatory text flyer, budget ballot questions format, exit poll if needed or wanted. Uh, advisory questions if needed or wanted, other communications to be included, social media and et cetera. So I'll leave it at that. And there's a proposed motion.
All right, I will, uh, read the resolution. Then we'll open it up for discussion. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorized. An explanatory text flyer be prepared and distributed for the fiscal year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five budget referendum. Resolution has been read. Uh, let's open it up for discussion. Anyone wish to go first?
So attached it for your reference is a copy of the twenty three, twenty four explanation text flyer, which includes the ballot questions. If approved, the text flyer will require town attorney approval and it'll be distributed in the River East News bulletin as an insert before the referendum.
So the next budget, um, so these two items are what we would normally be providing. And then the ballot questions. Um. These would be then updated. So we, so I guess do we have to take these one at a time, Andy, in terms of do we want to move forward with this format? One at a time? Is that, you think, are you comfortable with that? Or do you want to handle it differently in terms of this discussion?
Yeah, like I said, you can either do that or you have the proposed resolution be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorizes. Explanatory text flyer be prepared and distributed, uh, for the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget referendum. I think it includes all that information.
Right. So does anybody disagree with the format of this? Um, flyer that's going to be prepared? Or would like to see it prepared differently? No, no.
The only thing I would, um, ask that you consider putting on the, the graphic here is a QR code. That can, um, contain a hot link to the budget information that you have up top, the WWW.
That's something we can do, Donna, when we send it out.
I, I believe we can send it out, um, with a QR code. We would just need confirmation. From the attorney that that is acceptable on the explanatory text.
Okay, so you can confirm that, Donna. Uh, Andy, that'd be great. It's a good suggestion, Claudia. Thank you. The more information we can make easily accessible, the better. Okay, great. Um. So the. I mean, the, the text, that's, I guess, the first item. Then the other items, Andy, just make sure I'm clear. The other items, the advisory questions and other communication. Is not being covered by this. Resolution or is that, is this resolution intended to include all that?
Well, like I said, I, if, if, you're right. So I don't know if you guys want an exit poll, if you feel it's needed. That's up to you guys to decide. I I don't think you need one of where we are with this budget, but I'm, I'm just, uh. You know, I'm not a, the political people. If you guys want to do that, we'd have to get people to man that. And there's, uh, other communications, including social media. You can make suggestions on what I think Claudia just did with a QR code. Um, any other advisory questions, but, uh, the ones that are explanatory text in the budget ballot questions format are included.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if anyone, I mean, I. Yeah, I don't know if anyone, I mean, I, I have the exit poll. I always find sort of interesting because, I mean, the, the the outcome of the, of the vote sort of tells you what, what the polling is. I mean, in terms of the outcome of the vote, I mean, like it or not, like it, the, the outcome of the vote tells you where the public stands on, on the referendum. Advisory questions, from my perspective, I know we're limited, Andy, within the framework of what we can include in advisory questions. Is that, am I remembering that correctly? Dan, I don't know if you remember. I just remember being limited with those. Go ahead, Dan.
The limitation, the limitation I'm aware of is just that they have to be yes/no questions. And that, that kind of makes it difficult, because when you're doing high-low-good, that's a, that's a three, three possible answers, so it's not easy to put into a yes/no question. I, I know that's kind of the problems we've run into in the past, but.
Yeah, Dan, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I, I was going to say, as Keith is saying, it's a, it's a yes or no question. I really don't think we need them this time around. There has not, that I've heard of, seemed really to be any grumbling at all. Everybody seems to have done an incredibly great job. I say, see where it goes. You know, I, I agree with this resolution, and I would say, let's, let's just move the question vote on this and not do a exit poll.
Anybody feel differently about that? No? Saw a comment pop up that said there's two different budgets in the packet, but I'm, I'm assuming that's because you're including the twenty-twenty-three as an example of the.
I can jump in there. The twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-three is a sample. But before that, we had the transmittal from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance, which is the budget that the Selectmen approved, but we also included and added into this package this week, the approved Board of Finance, the recommended budget that they're sending on to public hearing. So that's what those two different budgets are.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Terry, for your, your comment. Question. Okay, so based on that, resolution has been read. I will proceed to move to a vote. Those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Keith. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Dan. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, aye. The resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, that would move us to the discussion of in-person and hybrid meetings. If, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tierney or Donna, if you want to sort of comment on where we are with that, and obviously, there's something to be here as well, but if there's anything you wish to add there in addition to what's been articulated in the packet, please let me know. Or please go ahead.
I'll, I'll read it if that's okay, Donna. The second way we wish to discuss returning to in-person meetings with a hybrid option, the meeting room at the town office building is now equipped with equipment to conduct hybrid meetings. The equipment has been successfully tested and used for several meetings of the Public Building Committee. Tom Andrews proposing a return to in-person meetings, starting with the April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Just for context, I have been part of those Public Building Committee meetings. Equipments work fine. Works great. No issues, no issues from the public. Obviously, you got to follow instructions to log on, so once you do that, once you sort of figure it out, but no, no issues there. So just letting you know that we're fine, in the three meetings or so that I used the equipment. I think it was three times that I used the equipment. Anybody have any, well, first of all, before we move to other comments, so thank the town and Donna. I think, Donna, this was a slightly less expensive option than what was presented by a, by a firm. I say that a little sarcastically, but maybe just reiterate the expense associated with it.
Yeah, the most recent quote we got for making that meeting room into a hybrid room was fifty thousand dollars. And I spent a couple hours with Keith Pettit in the meeting room. He showed us the setup that he invented for the RTC, and we got some equipment, speakers, some free Chromebooks from the Hebron Board of Ed. We spent under five hundred dollars, and it seems to work just fine, so.
What's the ending? So, of all those things that cause us all aggravation, this apparently is not going to be one of them. So thank you so much for all your work. Thank you, Keith, and thank you for everybody who sort of put their heads together to figure out a way to, to move this forward. I know it's, it's something we've been looking for, for a while, so to be able to do it creatively, and with some help and donations and some creativity at a very low cost, it's definitely worth moving forward. And again, I've been doing it a few times and no issues. So thank you. That, I'm, I'm expecting that nobody, well, I shouldn't assume. Does anybody disagree with moving forward on this as of the eighteenth on the board? No disagreement? Okay, we don't need a resolution. It's just, we're going to go forward with this on the eighteenth to in-person. And obviously, the hybrid example, I mean, the hybrid, just speaking for the board, I mean, the expectation is that we will be attending in person, obviously, with the asterisk by that, that there will be times personally, whether, you know, you're not feeling well, you've got a family obligation, work obligation. I, I travel from time to time. But the expectation would be that we will be there in person and move this forward. But obviously, hybrid gives both the public and the board an opportunity to to participate regardless of circumstance. But going forward, the expectation was, is that we will be there in person. Everyone comfortable with that? Thank you, Keith, for your, for inventing. So Keith, this could be something you could bring out, like nationwide, to towns across the.
Yeah, I, I, I think inventing was a little bit more credit than.
Or something, yeah.
But yeah, definitely trying, trying to find solutions with funds from a nonprofit gets you to try to use as little as possible, and I'm glad that that translated to the town. You know, that's, that's forty-plus thousand dollars that can now be put into the library setup, which, you know, hopefully, we can get that room online for some of the larger town meetings. But I'm, I'm very happy. You know, Donna and Andy and Matt and everyone was extremely helpful and supportive, and it was a group effort to get it going. You know, kudos to Donna for, for putting all the pieces together. I'm glad that we're going to be able to be back in person again. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so we don't need a motion. We just affirmation that we will move forward as, as, but thank you for that. Any, we'll move to F. Any other old business that the board wishes to bring? Any board member wishes to bring before us? Mr. Tierney, any other old business that you wish to include?
No.
Thank you so much. That moves us to nine, new business. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nine A item is the Tax Abatement Program. It's the Annual Interest Rate Review. Consider ordinance, Chapter three twenty, Article twelve, abatement, deferral, or property taxes for personal or limited income annual interest rate revenue. The Tax Abatement Ordinance, Chapter three twenty, dash, Article twelve, was established by the Board of Selectmen in April two thousand. The ordinance was created pursuant to General Statute twelve dash one twenty-four A. The ordinance caps a property owner's tax on a residential dwelling at eight percent of the total income from any source. Taxes that exceed the amount are conveyed to the town in the form of a lien, creating a securing an obligation to reimburse the town any amount of the taxes abated with interest. Those taxes, along with the interest, are paid to the town by no later than the date of the sale or transfer of such property, or upon the death of the last surviving owner. As part of the annual interest rate review, the board has the option to adjust the interest rate. The town manager is recommending that the interest rate for the two thousand and twenty-four be increased from a three-point-five percent to a four percent. And there's a proposed resolution, and there's a past history in the back, and then there's also, we've always reached out to Brian O'Connell, a financial person in town that served on the Board of Selectmen for many years, that was involved in this actual item. So the information is there for you to make a decision.
Thank you. Keith, could you read the resolution, please?
It resolves by the Hebron Board of Selectmen that in accordance with Chapter three twenty, Article twelve, Section three twenty dash twenty of the Hebron Town Code, the tax abatement interest rate for two thousand and twenty-four be set at four-point-zero percent.
Hey, thank you so much. Resolution has been read. Discussion. Anybody disagree with the recommendation? Dan?
Hey, I was just reading the background information. In the paper, it's saying three-point-five percent, but on this other sheet, it's saying one-point-five. I'm just trying to ascertain what, why the, the difference? What am I missing? Or is that two thousand and twenty-two? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So this starts at two thousand and twenty-two, this other sheet. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Answered my own question.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing that there's no need for further discussion. Resolution has been read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Keith, Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Dan. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye. The proposed resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, nine B. We have the draft agenda for the April eighteenth meeting, so please provide any feedback, adjustments, suggestions to the town managers and town manager staff. Prior to that, if you want to make any changes. I'll start with Mr. Tierney. Any other old, excuse me, new business? That's nine C. Any other new business you wish to?
No, I'd just like to point out on that agenda, we assumed, which I don't normally, or Donna doesn't normally do, we assumed that you were going to be in agreement, so we've already got it listed as a hybrid regular meeting on that agenda. So thank you for your cooperation.
That's, I appreciate that. Okay, from the board, any other new business? Okay, seeing none. Which, ten, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion in a separate vote if necessary. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Approval of our minutes, March twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-first, as well as B, our tax refunds noted on the screen. Okay, hearing no objection or no suggestion of removing an item for discussion, we'll move to, to a vote or a proposed motion. So we'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following as an agenda items, and motions contained therein is individually adopted. Sorry, I jumped ahead. The approval of the minutes from March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Minutes, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a regular meeting workshop in March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, a regular meeting. And then B, the approval of the tax refunds as noted. Motion has been read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Keith. Dan?
Hi, Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Dan. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, votes aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. That moves us to eleven on the agenda, the liaison reports. I do not have anything in AHM Youth Services history report, so I'll turn it over to Tiffany for anything you wish to inform the board about associated with the Hebron Board of Ed.
Sure, really quickly, the Hebron Board of Ed has done a lot of work over the past couple of weeks. They went line by line through their budget, and as will be reflected in the documentation that was shared with the board and the Board of Finance and with the public, they made additional reductions to their budget. So they've really been hyper-focused on that. Important to note again that this is not, their budget does, still does not include any new programming. It simply covers status quo. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Finance. Mr. Larson?
I have nothing. They did meet on the budget, but that was their deliberations based on what we passed on to them. I believe their meeting is actually next week.
Okay, thank you. Land acquisition. Keith?
Yes, the land acquisition meeting scheduled for last night was canceled, and there will be a special meeting scheduled in May. So no new updates.
Okay, thank you. Claudia, Ram Board of Ed?
My apologies, I'm on mute. The only message that would, they would like me to relay to the Board of Selectmen was, they worked very hard on the budget. They voted to move the capital and full budget forward. It is a less than a two percent increase. And please note, it is one of the lowest in the state, so we should be very proud of their hard work presenting a very responsible budget while still maintaining the great quality of the RAM school system.
Thank you, Claudia. That moves us to twelve, which is public comment. Donna, anybody wish to participate in public comment?
There's no one indicating public comment.
Oh, so Diane, I see your, your hand raised, so please, thank you for joining us. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to give an update on the budget, the meeting that we had earlier this week, and that the public meeting on the budget is not next week, it's the week after, I believe. And so, in the, in the packet that is online, I don't see the budget summary that the Board of Finance worked on. And so I'll just reiterate some of the things that we did. We plan to transfer five hundred thousand from, and I, I'm looking at this on my phone. Thank you for pulling that up. The five, we're looking at transferring five hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance to include in revenues. And this will, as reported earlier, the increase to the mill will be one-point-three-one to, for a total of thirty-four-point-five, rather than what you had given to us, the one-point-nine-two. Just to make sure that you're aware of that, and the median home that we talk about in our schedules, the increases to the median home would be about three hundred and twenty-five dollars using that mill rate. And thank you, as a personal comment, thank you for talking about ARPA. I look forward to making sure that we spend as much as we can. And I'm sure there are other projects that we could still identify and maybe get on there. And maybe even some safety projects for the schools that I think maybe the Board of Ed and the superintendent had identified, but I'm not sure that those have been brought forward to, for consideration. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane, for both those, those comments. Donna, any other public comment?
Doesn't look like anything else for tonight.
Great, that moves us to item thirteen. Tiffany?
Move to adjourn at eight oh eight PM.
Good meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you to the town staff. Andy, thank you so much. Have a good evening.